Good afternoon, everyone. This Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
You expect Councilmember Lalo A. Momentary? Councilmember Talamontes?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Maple?
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Pro Tem Vang?
Here.
Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. I interested Dalton Brown, who is the Executive Director for Administration for the Wilton Rancheria, is here. Mr. Brown, would you give us the honor of leading us with the land acknowledgement, please, and the pledge of allegiance? Do you have a copy of the land acknowledgement? It's right up there. There you go. Okay, yes. Please, everyone, everyone who can, please rise.
I thank everyone, to the original people of this land. The Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintun peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally-recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the Native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. We really appreciate it. And thank you to the leadership of the tribe, members of the tribe who are here. I know we're going to, we're going to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day in just a few moments. We begin with no report, Madam City Attorney, out of the closed session.
No, wait, there's nothing to report out at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's begin, first of all, I want to apologize, as I seem to do weekly, for being a little bit late. But we have good reason. We were in closed sessions discussing a number of very important city issues, and sometimes it runs over, but we also know that your time is important, and we're sorry for inconveniencing any of you. Let us begin with a special presentation, beginning recognizing the 50th anniversary of La Familia Counseling Center. I turn it over to colleagues, Councilmember Maple and Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. And it is my distinct honor to present this resolution today. If I can, can I call up Rachel Rios and the La Familia counseling team up to the mic here? I'll just say a few words. I won't belabor it because I can't say it better than you will, and then pass it over to my colleague, Mayor Pro Tem Vang, and then to our esteemed leader, Rachel Rios from La Familia. But this is really special because just earlier today, myself and Vice Mayor Guerra were at La Familia Counseling Center, the Maple Neighborhood Center off of Franklin Boulevard in beautiful District 5, and talking about their proposal for their transformative climate communities grant, and say that 10 times fast. And it's really quite special. It's something, as I understand it, those who came before me have been working on this for a long time, just about a decade, and it's soon to be in fruition. We hope we will keep it in your thoughts and prayers as they await what will come of this grant. But I feel very confident that they will see what I see, which is leadership, which is an organization that really cares about community and is willing to put their money where their mouth is and put the time and the energy. And the other thing I just really wanted to note is that the community is behind you. I mean, I can tell you, having knocked on all those doors and held many events over there, that everybody knows La Familia. Everybody knows that name and has really strong positive feelings about the organization, and that speaks to the work that you all do every single day in the community. You never leave them behind. You take them with you. In fact, it's their very desires and wants that you uplift and you put into all the work that you do, and that's really, that is seen in the grant proposal that you submitted. So I will be praying on it and keeping it in my, in my heart as we move forward. And so I wanted to start with that. I'm not going to read this entire thing because we're not allowed to do that, and we shouldn't take up that much time. But I do want to start with a couple sentences for some of the history, and then I'll pass it over to Mayor Pro Tem Vang. So La Familia Counseling Center was opened in 1973 as a program designed to provide counseling and support services to at-risk youth in the Alquai Flat neighborhood, so in District 4, with the support of the city and the county of Sacramento. They opened their Franklin Boulevard facility in 1995, and in 2015, La Familia expanded their programming to a nearby closed elementary school, the Maple Neighborhood Center, aptly named, designated as a federal envisioned center in 2021, where they will provide important services and host like-minded partners dedicated to serving the community, which you do, in fact, just this morning. Guided by its mission to improve the quality of life for youth and families of diverse backgrounds by helping them overcome adversity, become empowered, and succeed in their lives, La Familia continues to provide high-quality community services that have benefited many, and that is 100% true. And so I just wanted, I really want to thank you for all your work, 50 amazing years, hope here's to 50 more, and I'll pass it over to Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Councilmember Maple. First, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Maple for bringing this resolution to the full council, and really just wanted to say congratulations to La Familia on 50 years of amazing service to our community. And while folks may think that they are a Latino-serving organization, I just want to let everyone know that they serve the entire community, the entire community in the South Sacramento area, but I would actually say in the region. It's not just Latino families that you serve, but also our diverse community, our Monge communities. I know we hosted the first-ever Monge American Day, and it was actually La Familia that hosted that. And La Familia, I know that we have had so many partnerships during my time here as a councilwoman, from being a partner in our Save Coalition during the height of the pandemic and making sure that our families were vaccinated. La Familia is very special in my heart because I remember when I was just a community organizer, we fought really hard to make sure that we kept our neighborhood schools open. And when the school board decided to close the school, Maple was one of them. But we fought along with organizers and youth and our Latino families to actually open Maples. So as an organizer, I fought to reopen Maple, and then as a school board member, I had the opportunity to actually vote to make it happen, to fight to make it happen that that site can go to La Familia to do the incredible work. And it's been so amazing just to watch La Familia blossom over the years, 50 years, but there's going to be 50 more amazing years to come. And so I really just want to say thank you so much for your heart, your hustle, your service to this community. You are a family. You're La Familia, but you make everyone feel like they're part of the family and that they belong. And so thank you so much for everything that you all do, and I'm really excited that we get to recognize you today.
Wonderful. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to add on to what my colleagues have said. Rachel and I go back way back, and we've had many years of leadership here in the city of Sacramento, and I just want to acknowledge her for her leadership in running the La Familia organization. I know you haven't been there the whole 50 years, or maybe you have, but I know the last 20 years that you have done just an incredible job because I've seen it firsthand. And I just want to acknowledge you and all of your staff for the incredible work that you're doing that's making a difference in the South Sacramento community, and as my colleague said, in the entire city of Sacramento and in the region of Sacramento. So congratulations on 50 years on this resolution. I am glad that I am a part of it. I'm glad to see you here getting acknowledged and honored.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Bueno, felicidades en la boda de oro, you know, 50 years. And, and all I could say is el orgullo de South Sac. It's just great to see there. As you coined it, and may have coined it, "The Miracle" on 34th Street, we appreciate, you know, the work that you've done. And it's been said here about how much has changed, and it's exciting to see that it's been more than just the original mission. But thinking about the whole body, the whole community, you know, everything that involves, I think today's TCC grant request or appeal was endemic of the community's support. And I just, again, wanted to thank the board, the staff, the community members, and you, Rachel. And I know it's been a family affair as well. And so I want to also play homage to, you know, your, you know, your dear beloved husband, Billy Campos, because he was there too, all the time, and helping the kids and the kids who had had a rough time. Said, you, everyone deserves a second chance, and I just want to say thank you for your whole family who've been part of that miracle on 34th Street. Felicidades on 50 years.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing this resolution forward. I've also had just the joy of knowing and working with Rachel and her team for many years, and do just want to speak to just the heart and the passion and the love that it takes to create and support a team like this, Rachel, and just the incredible resilience that you have shown. That really shows just how strongly you believe in the vision of this community and what it can be. And I have watched you from afar and up close. You let me do a lot of crazy ideas. I think at one point, we installed, I think we installed a cycle track on Maple's, like, vice, like, like laptop once, and like, had kids running around on it, and you were like, "Sure," and I'm like, "Okay, cool." But, you know, it's, I think as someone, you're someone that I've really looked up to for how you carry yourself and your direction and your values and just how you do your work, really, you're impacting so many of us beyond what you could possibly know. And I just wanted the opportunity to say that as a congratulations today. It is a whole team effort. It's a community effort, but it takes a real heart to get the body moving, and you are that heart for a lot of people. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes?
Amen to what everyone else said. Congratulations.
So I just have to, just have to say something. Oh, thank you. I did, no, because, you know, we have, we are so fortunate to have many great community-based organizations, and you know, who's your favorite, who's your favorite one? They asked the mayor. There is no organization that better represents the heart and soul of Sacramento than La Familia, period, because you do, because of the way you do your work and because of the breadth of the issues you take on. You don't just look at one part of the person who may be suffering from a mental health issue. You don't look at one part of a person who's maybe trying to find greater skills and gain greater skills to be able to work. You don't just focus on one age group. You focus on people, and you focus on the whole person, and you do it in a way that is both caring, compassionate, and effective. And you fight. You fight for the community. I'm just thrilled about our partnership with the Empowerment Center, with all your future plans, and to know that you are going to be a central part of community life forever going forward gives me great hope for the future of Sacramento. That's on behalf of all of us. So if the, the, the mic is yours, if, Rachel, if you want to, maybe two people, if that's okay, just because whatever works would be. And Councilmember Maple and Vang, thank you for bringing this forward. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much, council members, all of you. I feel like we have a really close relationship because we've worked in the community. All of you are so committed to Sacramento, and so we really are so honored today for this recognition. You know, 50 years ago, something magical was happening in Sacramento because a couple of really amazing organizations were born 50 years ago. Urban League was 55 years ago, Community Resource Project 50 years ago. And my hope is that in 50 years, people will be saying the same thing about 2023, saying, "What was happening in Sacramento that these organizations were being uplifted in creating that future?" You know, as you said, no one does anything alone. We have a saying at La Familia, "Together we can make a difference, juntos podemos." And this is what we do here. Our team here is, you know, to what the mayor was saying, is we look at all, everyone, and every single staff person looks at the whole community. And so we couldn't do it without dedicated staff, without a dedicated board, and really without the community who puts their trust in us every day. And so we take that very seriously. And so we're so appreciative for this honor and this recognition. Thank you so much. And let me just say for the longstanding partnership with the city and, and Mayor, for your commitment, your belief in us and the Opportunity Center, which got us to this level with your initial commitment, you know, it's been able to leverage so much. So thank you so much.
Come on up.
So we're going to have you come through here.
All right, wonderful start to our meeting. Let us now move to the second equally important presentation, which is the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, presented by Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sure some folks who come to our meetings regularly are thinking, "Hey, wasn't Wilton Rancheria here like two weeks ago?" And yes, they were. I'm really thankful that you all were able to come back again to represent the tribe at this different special occasion. And yes, I did present this resolution last year and the year before that, and I will continue to present it every year and every other tribal recognition I can get my hands on, as long as I'm privileged to sit on this dais. And, and I do this for a simple reason, which is a personal one, that I am an indigenous woman, but I do not belong to a tribe. My family was relocated, our records were eliminated, and my grandmother saw practicing indigeneity as a vulnerability, something that would potentially lead us to be ostracized, not let us be successful. So I don't even have that many cultural norms to hold on to at this time. And I share all of this because every single day I am reminded of the persistent and present-day impact of colonialism. The pain that I feel being separated from a people and a land and a language that I may never know never gets better. I long for them so deeply, honestly, that in my soul, it literally aches when I think about what, what I don't have. Colonialism robbed me of my identity and sense of self, and all of us long for belonging, connection to our history and to our community, and for far too many that is too far from reality, which has had real lasting impacts on their lives to this day. I believe that present-day colonialism, for the most part, shows up not in selfishness but in protectiveness. A family, a faith, a status of land, colonialism leads us to believe that historic wrongs can never be righted, because to right those wrongs might mean that someone has to lose something. And I'm here to say that nothing can be further from the truth. We can and must work together to regain the balance that colonialism stole from us, the interdependence and cooperation that is necessary for all people, regardless of religion or race, to thrive. Finding colonialism today means seeking reconciliation, understanding, and pushing for freedom and self-determination for all people. And it's the struggle that the Wilton Rancheria is still engaged in. Having only recently regained their federal recognition, they are now still working to attain the land and the resources that they need to make their tribe sustainable for the long term. And so I cannot honestly think, not only because you are only federally-recognized tribe of this region, but I could not think, even if that was not the case, of a better group to come forward and accept this resolution today, because Indigenous Peoples' Day is both about mourning what was lost and recognizing the pain that has happened, while also celebrating just the incredible resiliency of people who have persevered through so much and are continuing to fight today to maintain culture and communities. So with that, I would love to welcome the representatives of the tribe to come up here and, and share a couple of words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Valenzuela, and City Council members for welcoming us here today. My name is Samantha Sybrant. I am Mountain Maidu from the Taylorsville Rancheria, which is up in Plumas County. But I share, I serve as Chief of Staff for Wilton Rancheria. I'm joined today by our Tribal Councilmember, Mark Andrews, our Director of Administration, Dalton Brown, and Alicia Panku, who is a tribal member and also a member of our staff. It's an honor for us to be here today on behalf of Wilton Rancheria, the only federally-recognized tribe in Sacramento County, and I would like to thank you for recognizing October 9, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. The celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day serves as a critical reminder that no one can discover a region that has been inhabited by people since time immemorial, that we no longer celebrate a man whose false discovery led to the barbaric treatment of people on many continents. This holiday is not an attempt to erase or rewrite history. In the contrary, it is an important step in telling an accurate and honest history of what happened on this land. Indigenous Peoples' Day serves as recognition of the diversity and depth of Native people, how hard we've had to work and how hard we have to continue to work for that recognition and visibility. It celebrates that despite over 500 years of attempted genocide of our ancestors, our culture, our traditions, and our people have not only survived but thrived. We thank you again for welcoming us here today and look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
A mentor of mine often said, wisdom sits in places. And when you think of places, our place as a tribe is the Sacramento Valley. And it's important to acknowledge and continue to recognize our engagement, that we, as a sovereign nation, continue to build these relationships, to foster them and cultivate them even further so that we are at the table. So I gently throw down a challenge even of how can we work together more? How can Wilton Rancheria, how can we as a tribal nation be more actively engaged in making sure that the ancestral knowledge that is carried through our tribe in how to treat the land, how to treat the waterways, the animals, the, the land around us? How do we bring that to a higher level so that we are continuously working together? But thank you for this acknowledgement, and thank you for continuing to support the tribe, and I look forward to working together to open the next chapter of Wilton Rancheria's history.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Councilmember Kaplan?
Want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for bringing this, but I also want to thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Sacramento History Museum. So when you talk about how can we tell the story of those who are native to our land here? I mean, I live in Natomas. It's a reason it's called Natomas. But I think the ways that we can expand, which the partnership you have with the Sacramento History Museum is step one, and I am always open to hearing how we can include your history into our history of Sacramento, because it starts with our Native and Indigenous individuals who are here first, that I think needs to be blended in and told as a story, as one. But it's, I thank you, and I agree, there are ways, I think, we can work together to make sure that it's in our schools, as well as expanding not just at the Sacramento History Museum and, and it's out at Effie Yaw, but other areas in Sacramento.
Thank you. I love, first of all, thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for bringing this forward and your eloquent words about why this is so important. Mr. Brown, what you said really struck a chord with me as well, because I sometimes worry that our weekly pledge becomes important ritual, but maybe becomes so routine that we don't always stop and think about why it's so important. And you challenge us. You challenge us to actually bring even greater meaning to the pledge we make every week, and, and we take you up on that and look forward to getting together and talking about how we can live up to the meaning of Indigenous Peoples' Day and that pledge. Thank you. Thank you. Want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, members. If I might ask for just a point of personal privilege, I was going to wait till the end of the meeting, but I feel with a heavy heart that I want to make a comment about the situation in Israel, if you, if you'll allow me. Ashgolan is Sacramento's sister city, right on the Gaza border. It is reported that numerous people were murdered by Hamas over the last three days, and over 100 people taken hostage, including a 97-year-old Holocaust survivor. In my religious congregation, throughout many religious congregations, throughout our entire community, Sacramento has many families with children and close family members who are currently living in danger in Israel. In Sacramento, my community, our community, is in shock. The image of Jews being hauled off anywhere to God knows where to face God knows what is bone-chilling and heartbreaking and reminds us, reminds me, of why prior generations fought and sacrificed so much for a Jewish homeland. This attack on Saturday that has lasted these last three days is the worst attack on Jewish civilians since the Holocaust. To put it into some perspective, 1,000 people killed. The scale, if compare, comparing Israel's population to the United States' population, it would be as if a terrorist attack killed 25,000 to 30,000 people. Now, I know that we live in worlds of gray and complexity, and I long and have taken many occasions to speak about that complexity and peace and why, why the situation in the Middle East is so fraught. But tonight, I just want to speak for myself and as Mayor of this city without nuance, for there is no moral equivalence to what occurred in Israel by Hamas over these last several days. To murder hundreds of young people at a rave concert, to kidnap kids and innocent people, these are not people, and I'm referring to Hamas, these are not people fighting for a cause. They are butchers. This was pure evil. A man of peace, Andar Sadat, once said that this fundamentalism is not religion, referring to extremism within his own country. It is obscenity. These are lies, the criminal use of religious power to misguide people. Everyone has opinions about what should happen and why this happened. And there will be time to dissect all of this and to speak about how we might eventually make peace in this part of the world. But in this moment, in this moment, in my view, it is time for only one thing: stand strongly with the people of Israel. And so tonight, I pray for peace. I hope we all pray for peace. We pray for the hostages and their families and for all the lives lost, and yes, we pray for all innocent people, all innocent people. This has been, again, a very traumatic event for the Jewish community, one of the very vital and important parts of our diversity within greater Sacramento. And I wanted to just say what was in my heart, and I hope that the larger community will join me and join us in, yes, praying for peace, but also speaking out against what was pure evil. How do you, how do you kill babies and kidnap families and threaten to execute them and all this barbarism? It, it has no place, and it's affected us very deeply. Thank you very much for the opportunity to say a couple of words here tonight. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
I'd be, yes, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say a couple.
Of course, Lisa. Yes, Councilman Kaplan, Councilmember Kaplan. Go ahead.
I appreciate your thoughts and your
I appreciate your thoughts and your leadership on this. I often sat, growing up, listening to my grandmother and my grandfather talk about their history, their knowledge, and what it meant for Israel to be created, of an exception, of acceptance, of no longer a family history of running and moving because of family members being persecuted, killed, just because we identify as Jewish. My grandmother, I was especially close to, she had three boys and I was the only granddaughter. And one of the pieces of wisdom she gave to me, and is something that in our culture we pass down, one, it's never forget, never forget the Holocaust, but also, we have an obligation and is a duty to speak up and stand up. Because we, as Jews, have all too often known what it is to be singled out and targeted and to be made the other, persecuted, dehumanized, and we know what deafening silence is, we know what inaction is. The United States was silent in World War II at the beginning. That is known in our history. So today, it is passed on along generations that we have a duty to recognize and stand up and speak out. As so eloquently put by Holocaust survivor and Nobel Laureate Eli Wiesel, it tells us when you hear from a witness, you become a witness. And that is why it's so important to share the stories. Today, we are bearing witness to brutal and heinous attacks, murders of children, of families, of innocent victims. So I swore I'd never be silent to my grandmother and that I would speak out and speak up because this is never a time of both sides are good people. There is never a time that it is okay that innocent victims are brutally murdered and slaughtered. Too often in history, this is the history of Jewish people, and we can't have it, we can't stand it, and we, as the United States, need to stand up and say no more. And I am proud to support Israel. I am proud of my Jewish heritage. But I also recognize we have got to have peace. Because while people may disagree, the slaughter of innocent victims is never the answer. And my heart goes out to friends and family members that I know have their children extended family in Israel, who are on the front line or are fighting. Nobody wants to ever be put in that position, and I am thankful for our Jewish community in coming together and recognizing that together we will once again bear witness and stand strong through this tragedy. But we, as a city, must stand strong together and say no more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Liloey.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. You know, this is another reason why I love this country so much. As a council member sitting here of a Muslim faith, I stand here together with my colleague, Councilmember Kaplan, and Mayor, to acknowledge this horrific act that's taking place. It's my huge condolences to whether you are resident of Israel or resident of Palestine today, that you're going through what you're going through right now. Hamas by no means represents the religion of Islam. Their act was horrible, but the fact is that a lot of innocent people today, on Tuesday, are getting killed. And I agree that we need peace. We need to figure out how we can make this 70-year-old war to come to an end so the innocent people can live their life. No one should go to a concert worrying about some ignorant fanatics taking their lives away. No two-year-old or a four-year-old should be walking around the rubble or whatever is left from their house trying to find their parents. It's 2023. We can do better than that as human beings. So, you know, I stand together with my colleagues. I express my regret, pain with both my wonderful Jewish friends who have family members in Israel and my wonderful Arab friends who have families in Palestine. With all this that's happening today, let us not forget that there was also an earthquake in Afghanistan that so far has led up to 3,000 lives. 3,000 people have died by a simple earthquake in 2023. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, members. I appreciate the indulgence and the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you. All right. Let us move to the consent calendar. Let's move to the consent calendar. Are there items that, members, I know, Mr. C. Manager, you mentioned something to me. I didn't tell you, we want to, continue for one week. That means just the pass for publication continued for next week, so it won't be heard substantively next week. Number 12. Okay, so number 12 will be continued for a week. Are there any other items that members would like? I see, Mayor Protamvang, go ahead.
Not to poll, but just to make a comment on item 3.
Item 3, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Maples?
Comments on item 9.
9. And Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Brief comments on item 9 and 11.
Very good. Let's go through, Mayor Protamvang, item 3.
Thanks, Mayor. This item is regarding really the beginning of the remodel design scope for the Martin Luther King Junior Library in South Sacramento. MLK is actually one of our oldest libraries in our city and is very much needed for renovations. The remodel is going to be really important for our community in particular, and I'm just really thrilled that we're going to begin to, we're going to have the opportunity to begin the process. I do want to take this time to just thank city staff, James Christensen, our facilities manager from Department of Public Works, and also Richard Parks, our senior architect, for all their hard work to get us to this moment. I think our staff worked really hard to secure $8 million for the Martin Luther King Library, $5 million of it being grant, $2 million with city leverage from city funds. And so this vote tonight that we're taking will allow us to start the process to analyze the facility, begin to seek community input, design a concept based on that feedback, and really help lead us through the approval process. And so I'm really excited for this long overdue for Medivue and for Martin Luther King Library. And so I'm really excited, and hopefully all my colleagues will vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan on item 9.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to call out that this is an awesome grant acceptance from the California Natural Resources Agency for community reinvestment projects, specifically funding of projects to install EV charging stations and helping in disadvantaged communities, as well as providing programs that provide low-income residents with rides to essential locations and creation of jobs for our youth. I just want to call out the state partnership in this on how we better our city.
Yes, thank you. Before we go to the next one, I just want to also say, I'd like to pull item 11. Right?
I'm on 11.
I'm sorry?
I'm on 11.
You're speaking on 11? We're going to pull it, though, right? Thanks? Okay. Yeah, okay. No. One second, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead. Councilmember Maples, you're going to speak on item 9. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it brief. Just want to echo the comments of my colleague, Lisa Kaplan, and just say that, you know, sometimes it can seem easy. You know, you see the state giving a $20 million check to the city, and we get to do all these amazing projects, but it really is not that simple. We have an amazing team here at the city, wonderful staff that not only put in the work to put in grant applications, to actually receive the funds, but work very closely with departments all over the city and council offices and our communities to make them happen. And a lot of times, things go awry, and yet they magically still come to fruition, and that's not due to magic, it's due to really hard work and dedication of our staff. So just really want to thank and appreciate them. And then also just call out specifically the $500,000 that made the Oak Park Farmers' Market happen this year. If it wasn't for that funding, it wouldn't have happened. And just wanted to also make a note that our dear friend, Joni Titherington, is still recovering, our Oak Park Farmers' Market manager, and she, with this money and her own fundraising, was almost, I think, almost $70,000 or $100,000 that she did by herself, she was able to get the Park Farmers' Market back up and running. And I just want her to know, if she's listening or her family or friends, that you're in my prayers, and I hope that you get better well soon. Thank you.
So I know that, I'm sorry, that there are some really important and significant items within item 9, which is what we're talking about. There are also a couple of items that aren't quite ready yet. And in speaking with Assemblymember McCarty, he asked that maybe we continue the item for a couple of weeks, not to jeopardize any of the good things that the members have talked about, but there are a couple of items that still need some more work. And I would prefer if we could continue item 9, please.
I'm good with that, Mayor, as long as you've confirmed with staff that it doesn't jeopardize the funding or the acceptance of any programs.
It doesn't. It does not. It does not.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my read to the record. Staff would like that pulled, and it does not jeopardize anything.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
There hasn't been a motion yet. Maybe I can make a motion and we consent with the continuation of items 9 and 11.
9 and 11, that's right. That's right.
9 and 12.
9 and 12.
Thank you very much. Not 11. 11 is being polled for a separate vote, correct?
Separate vote on 11.
I'll second. Thank you.
We're, you know what, we're a pretty organized group here. Okay, it's 9 and 12. There we go. That is the motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. And then I know members wanted to speak on other items here. Councilmember Kaplan, you wanted to speak on item 11, correct? Go ahead.
For item 11, I just want to thank city staff, as well as Los Rios Community College District, for pulling together and getting a grant for an early childhood education apprenticeship program. As a mom during COVID with, at that time, a four and a seven-year-old, having to pull my children from childcare and working from home in COVID and knowing how many other parents had to do the same and how many early childhood education providers in the city we lost, and how essential it is for working families to have affordable childcare, I just want to call out and thank Los Rios, the city, for this program, which is going to create an apprenticeship program for early childhood education that are going to receive paid-on-the-job training, mentoring from experienced early education leaders, and will see their Child Development Association teacher permit upon completion of a six-week course because we lost approximately 250 childcare facilities because of COVID, as well as seeing a 13.3% reduction in childcare workforce. It is so important and essential for families who are working families day-to-day, hour-to-hour, to have affordable early childhood education and spots for their children. And I just want to thank the city and staff on Los Rios for this partnership.
So we are going to take up item 11 as a separate vote? Is that what you, what?
No.
No. We're fine. Okay. So let's hear the public testimony on the consent calendar.
Eric's on 11.
You're on 11. Go ahead, Eric. Sorry.
Thank you very much. So if I could have Janine Cooper, please, come up here real quick, and if she's in the room. And as she comes up, this is one of those projects we've been working on that started here in the chambers right before the pandemic, when we created a task force. And one of the key things that came about was the need to create a strategic plan for early childhood education. One of those outcomes was actually creating a position in economic development, and that was with Janine Cooper. And I just wanted to personally thank you. I don't think you, staff, gets enough recognition in the work that's been done. Janine has not only been leading and working with SETA and Head Start at the county level, which, one of the outcomes was not only a study funded about what are our challenges, and this is one of the outcomes of the study, but also, I've personally heard directly from not only the Head Start, but also the childcare providers, the individual businesses, about the exceptional work you've been doing to making sure our county, not just our city, is working together to find solutions to that. And so this was my opportunity to thank staff and to say, Janine Cooper, thank you for an amazing job as our early childhood education manager, and I believe she deserves a big round of applause for this.
So sweet. Thank you. Thank you so much. It is truly my passion to work with children and to serve families. So I'm so grateful to be in the position. I tell Denise that all the time. I'm grateful to do the work, so thank you. I appreciate that.
You deserve the recognition.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you. And there's more to come. They meet monthly with all of our partners. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Let's hear from the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two speakers. The first is Fee Ye on item 4, and then Dr. Crindral Truth Bay on item 11.
Are the members of the public here? Fee Ye?
Fee Ye on item number 4.
Please. Come on up, welcome. You just come right on up, just come right up to the podium, yeah, just, you're good.
This is my first time.
No, no, just relax.
Do you have two minutes to address the council? You'll see the timer up on the screen.
Sure. Basically, I'm here to represent my community here on the 10th Street, this historic community. So the whole 10th Street, as we all know, that from X Street to the Capitol, it mostly are historic buildings as for older, it's considered older part of the town. And so what get to the point here is like, so during the end of the summer, right, of this year, that the 10th Street have, we have noticed that that has a big change. What I would like to specifically just want to point out that we noticed the new expanded bike lane was put in place, okay? And also, there's the re-lined parking spots was also showing on the street. That here, this is what has resulted, this what has resulted to, number one, so in some areas, we pretty much, the resident loss of 75% of the parking space. Yeah, we did the measurement. So 75%, yeah, we're talking about. So and now, another thing is a decrease in safety. That's the whole idea. I'm here to represent the, I would say, the neighborhood here.
If you're comments, your time is complete.
We're going to let you.
But Councilmember Valenzuela has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Miss Ye. We've been talking actually to some of the property owners and businesses right there. So I have your information here. Is it okay if we follow up with you tomorrow to work through?
Okay.
We have some solutions we're trying out.
Okay. So I didn't realize that. So maybe I'm here for the safety issue. Yeah. Okay, great. Then you have my information.
You did a good job and alerted us, Rob. And now, Councilmember Valenzuela will follow up with you tomorrow, okay?
Great. Okay. I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
And Dr. Truth Bay on item 11.
So the recommendation for $270,000 for the Los Rios Community College District for early education, early childhood education, I believe it should be doubled, at least $500,000. Early childhood development. Early childhood development specifically for our at-risk youth is necessary, is absolutely necessary for them to have the resources, especially from ages zero to five. By the time they're 13, they're realized, depending on what nationality they are, that the surroundings does not support who they are, especially Black and Brown youth. So $271,000 after what, 150 million ARPA funds? This is a slap in the face. This needs to increase when it comes to mental health, when it comes to homelessness. Early childhood development should not see no less than $300,000. I urge you, just as we give this nightgiving speech concerning other countries, other babies being killed, let's look at the war zone right here in our backyard, sir. Just saying. We're not taking away from the trauma that's happening in Israel, but we have the Holocaust right here in our backyard. We're not addressing it with the funding that we have sitting there. So I'm asking for Agenda Number 11 to increase specifically for early childhood, at least $500,000. Trust and believe is going to go into somewhere that's well worth it. So these kids can know that somebody cares, that the education that they're not getting in these public schools, especially Del Paso Heights, a lot of these high-risk areas where there aren't much resources, the least you can do with these ARPA funds is give as much as you can because this is extra money on top of Sacramento city, city budget. We got to do better. $228 million for police needs to be discreet, specifically when you got this fool McPhail sitting there, year in and year out, harassing people on his spare time. Just saying.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. So, Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. We do have a motion on the consent calendar.
And, Mayor, can I reiterate that motion?
Yes.
Does that include item 11? Item nine and 12 are being continued, but this includes item 11. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mayor Protem? Is that correct? Thank you.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for everyone's patience and, and comments. All right. Let us move to the important public hearing for the evening, and that is the Stone Beetland Plan Unit Development. Who is making the presentation on this and this item? Development dies for lack of a...
Marcus?
Just kidding. Sorry.
Step down.
Okay, I'm just teasing.
So, Mayor, we're on item number 13, which is Stone Beetland Planned Unit Development.
Yep.
P21-042. Staff presentation.
Staff presentation, please. Thank you. Good evening. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Angel Anguiano, and I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. And I'm here to present on this agenda item 13, Stone Beetland Planning Unit Development Project. I just want to quickly introduce the project, and after I'm done, the applicant will provide his presentation today. Before you today is an exciting new project in South Sacramento. The Stone Beetland Plan Unit Development Project is a request by the applicant for the necessary entitlements to allow for future development that covers approximately 140 acres. The project would create a new neighborhood with a minimum of 1,100 dwelling, 1,100 dwelling units, ranging from attached and detached single-unit dwellings to high-density multi-unit dwelling housing. The project also includes 198 units of affordable housing, representing nearly 20% of the overall unit count. Most of the units are located within half a mile from the Morrison Creek Regional Light Rail Station, which is currently operating but largely inaccessible by vehicle. The applicant will provide access to the station through new roads and a variety of trail networks. As such, the project is considered a transit priority project and will capitalize on its location near transit by providing much-needed housing in Sacramento, but specifically in South Sacramento. The project was presented before the Parks and Community Enrichment Commission, the Active Transportation Commission, and the Planning and Design Commission, all of which recommended and forwarded recommendation of approval to City Council this evening. Planning staff is recommending of approval of the, of the project this evening, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and findings of fact included in the staff report. I also want to read into the record that we have supplemental material that have been included as part of a supplemental material sheet. And included in that supplemental are updated conditions of approval that have been reviewed by the applicant during the subdivision review committee and have been accepted by the applicant today. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'll hand it over to Nick Abdis to give his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abdis, further proponent?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Nick Abdis with the Law Office of Abdis and Cucci on behalf of the Stone Beetland Project. I have to say, for me personally, as a lifelong resident of Sacramento and also professionally as a land use attorney, this presents a high watermark for me in being able to present this project, one of the largest transit priority projects in the region, capitalizing on investments from regional transit on the Morrison Creek Light Rail Station, the ability to incorporate off the bat 20% of the project units as deed-restricted affordable project, as well as private, providing enhancements to connectivity to the Detroit neighborhood and community that only has one way in and one way out today, and will connect them via automobile, via pedestrian trail and bike trails to the, the services and amenities within the project area and within the greater South Sacramento community. I have a short presentation for you, and I'll try to click through this, but again, appreciate your indulgence. On the screen here, I won't go through everything, but this is our entire project team. As we mentioned, this project from the get-go, the conversation that I had with Taylor Builders when they first came to me was this, this needed to be something special. And not something special just as in a project, but also in the approach. And so we decided to commence on this project with extensive and early and meaningful community outreach. And obviously, that helped inform what we've done. Some of the attributes of the project, again, won't go through all these, but just to highlight some of them. Again, a little bit of the schedule. We started very early with pre-planning. It's been a pleasure to work with your staff. A lot of unique concepts and ideas that have been incorporated here, and I want to commend staff for their help and cooperation and frankly, guidance through this process. Again, it's a, this project is south of the 102 acres that the city has purchased and kind of gives you a sense of the, the location next to Delta Shore, south of Detroit neighborhood, and obviously close to the Mesa Grande, Deerfield Mesa Grande community. And as I mentioned before, as a transit priority project, two-thirds of the project is located within a half-mile of the existing Morrison Creek Light Rail Station. The land uses today do contemplate a great degree and diversity of densities, but we obviously retooled that to make something even more special. A little bit of the history of this project goes certainly way back to 1988. Again, won't go through all of this, but gives you a sense on how long this project's been envisioned for development. Community outreach, I think, again, a really proud point for us. We had several early outreach meetings before we submitted a project application for meetings, organized community meetings with stakeholders, and that doesn't count, obviously, the countless one-on-ones we had with, with folks. Again, a little bit of a summary of each of the, the outreach meetings, and I do want to acknowledge Mayor Protem Vang and her leadership with this project. Again, we really appreciate it, and it is something we're very proud of, and I know you can be too as well. Some of the key can, planning concepts for this project, we embrace density, we embrace housing diversity, connectivity and convenient access, and a lot of community cohesion. Again, not going to go through all this out of respect for everyone's time, thank you. As a transit priority project, again, pursuant to SB 375, Mayor might know a little bit about that piece of legislation. In any event, it has certain criteria as to how a transit priority project is designed, and this certainly goes through that. Again, won't repeat that. This is in visual...
Pottery will get you everywhere, by the way.
What's that?
Never mind.
What did I tell you, Mayor? Don't quit your day job. Okay, again, a little bit about the TPP project and sort of how it guides the land plan. And this, this exhibit identifies the four villages around which we designed the plan. Obviously, the transit village is the core and anchor of this project. Again, this is the project site plan. As you can see, we have a highly amenitized project with numerous park and pedestrian connectivity trails, as, as well as a traffic circulation as well. Again, the affordable housing component is integrated immediately adjacent to the light rail stop and adjacent to market rate multifamily opportunities, as well as a CMU site, which is a commercial mixed-use site. Again, some of the planning concepts that were incorporated into the project, the park and trail design, you can see the highly amenitized nature, north, south, east, west, and several parks, including a park adjacent to the Detroit neighborhood, which is something we heard early on and something that is sorely needed in the community. And we placed it in a location, obviously, for convenience and accessibility to the existing community. Some of the central features of our parks and trail design. And that is it. I know I rushed through that, but again, this is a phenomenal project, and we appreciate the opportunity to be before you today and make a difference in providing housing opportunities for folks in the South Sacramento community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abdis. All right. Do we have, let's hear from members of the public. But Mayor Protem Vang, do you want to make an opening comment before we hear from the public testimony? Okay.
So, Mayor, I have only one speaker. It's Dr. Truth Bay. Is Dr. Truth Bay still here? Okay, I do not see her.
Okay. Then let's turn it over to members of the council. Start with Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. First, I just want to take this opportunity to thank city staff. I want to say thank you to Marcus, Anhil, Stassi, and Greg. Just really thank you so much for your due diligence and all your hard work and working with the applicants over the years to get to this moment. I also want to take this time to thank Nick. I want to thank Noah and just your entire team for being fully present with community members. I don't think I've met any developers that have been this intensive in making sure that we do community outreach and really listening to them on their concerns and really listening to their feedback. So I really just want to say thank you on behalf of Team DA and just the community as well. And in particular, I also want to say thank you to the community members, our neighborhood leaders for all your feedback, in particular, the Metaview Neighborhood Association, Larry Lee and Margarita Chavez from the Detroit Neighborhood Association for providing their comments and feedback to the development and to our staff. But in particular, I also want to uplift civic threat as well. They submitted comments in support of this project as well. And just really want to thank all the community members that have participated. I do want to mention that, you know, when, when there was concern throughout the process, I really appreciate staff and also Nick and your team in working with our residents to ensure that we can address any of their concerns and, and on the city staff end, putting conditions to address any, any concerns that they may have. And so I just want to say thank you because that takes a lot of work. It takes intentionality, right? And so I want to thank the city staff and the developer. For me in particular, I think what's really exciting about this project is that it's transit, right? It's a transit priority development. This project is literally right next to transit, and it's going to help us reduce our vehicle miles traveled, which is something we talk a lot about, right? Reducing our carbon footprint and address climate change. So that's really exciting. And what's also really exciting is if you take a look at the plan, it also has several bike lanes as well and trails that's going to really allow for that connectivity, which is something that South Sacramento doesn't really have, and I'm really excited to see this. Another component is really just the affordable housing. I know that we're in conversation to look at different types of policy, updating our ordinance. I know that this meets the threshold for affordable housing. It actually exceeds it by 20%, and so that's really great. But the most important thing for me as the councilwoman for this area is that this project is really going to allow connectivity to Detroit neighborhood. And, and you heard earlier from Nick, and I think Nick actually heard from me in the neighborhood, is that we oftentimes, oftentimes, we talk about Detroit being a really closed community, one way in, one way out, and there's no way for this community to really have connectivity. There's not even a park in that area. We had to do an MOU with the school district to allow for green spaces, and so this is going to provide a lot of great opportunities. This is the type of housing, Mayor, that we want in our city. It has an environmentally intentional design, right, to really think about how can we improve the health of our communities. When I was looking at the plan in particular, I mean, it's really about reducing car dependency. It's also promoting healthy behaviors, walking, biking. And again, like I said, the most important thing is that it really connects Detroit to existing neighborhoods and new neighborhoods. The only, a comment that I have in particular for this project, although I would say city staff and the developer has done a really good job, is that, you know, once council approves, if they approve this project, I hope that we just stay consistent in ensuring that we continue to update the community, right? They're really excited about this project. And I know it's not going to just happen overnight, but making sure we keep them appraised to let them know what's happening with the project. And so I'm really excited, really hoping that we can get moving on this project. I think for far too long, we have had so many vacant properties. As you saw from the presentation, this is something that's long in the works, but we're getting closer to that moment, to that reality that we want for South Sacramento. And so with that, I would be happy to move the item. And yeah, let's, let's start building something that's environmentally friendly and ready to really uplift South Sacramento. And I think this project does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, the member of the public who had signed up was out for a moment, now has come back. Maybe we should hear from the member of the public, and then we'll go back to the council.
Thank you, Dr. Truth Bay.
Dr. Truth Bay.
And then Mayor Protem Vang, was that also opening the public hearing with your motion?
I would like to open the public hearing, close it, and then make the motion.
And then we'll hear from the member of the public, and then we can close it.
Second by Vice Mayor Geta, I think.
Dr. Truth Bay?
Yes. Nothing long. I just say bravo to this development. Hopefully, it can serve people, right, the most vulnerable. It is extensive, and I'm just watching to see that we have more projects like this. The Stone Beetland Plan Unit is very necessary. So thank you again, May Vang, for explaining the details of this project. I really don't have nothing negative to say. I just want to say bravo to this project, and let's see more of it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you. Let's go back to the council vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, again, echo the comments that our Mayor Protem Vang mentioned, and also to thank the project team here who put together a very forward-thinking project. It's, the, many of these parcels are not easy to, to develop and to, you know, plan, and the fact that it has active transportation, mixed income, they're not, those are challenging. It's easier to do a cookie cutter approach, and the fact that we're using a light rail station to help access, address not only the housing costs, but the transportation costs. So with that, I was proud to second this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the project team, and thank you to the leadership of Mayor Protem Vang.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to, want to echo my colleagues, want to, want to thank Mayor Protem Vang for her leadership on this issue and, and the project developers, and just say, can we make all of the hearings like this for our projects? It's not often that you don't, don't hear an opposition, and you hear a lot of great comments. I also wanted to point out one thing in particular. Received quite a few phone calls in the last week or so, and just really want to appreciate the, the project developers for their work with labor. You know, specifically operating engineers, Level 3, and laborers like Local 185. This is a really important component of these projects, not just, obviously, affordable housing's a big one, active transportation's a big one, but working, creating good union jobs to do this work, making sure that the people who build these projects can afford their own homes and, and to feed their families is, is really important to me, and I know many of my colleagues. So I just want to commend you on that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I too just want to echo the leadership of Mayor Protem May Vang, because this is, as well as, as the developer, because when we talk about what is our vision for the city, you look at the general plan. This is actually a development that hits the general plan. Because, you know, sometimes people talk about general plan, this is what we're going to do. This is about accessible housing near transit, expanding housing types, the mixed different types that we have. It's about infill development. It's about transit-oriented development and walkable blocks and approximately 1.5 miles of Class 1 bike paths. It's accessibility. It is updating, it is enriching our city, but the partnership and the thoughtfulness of your leadership since coming in, making this come to fruition, labor... since coming in, making this come to fruition, labor, and the builder has to be commended. I mean, honestly, we hear about developers and like, they're evil, you know? No, they're people, they're businesses, but I think they really want to do good. And that is something we are seeing in this project that I feel needs to be called out, that this is all possible, and this is possible when there's open, transparent communication. Thank you for our city staff for, you know, encouraging this, because it is about taking a project that has a long history, not necessarily positive, and how can we make it something positive for our community in blending all the things that we envision for our city. So, thank you for your leadership on this, and hopefully, we can see more of this coming into the city.
Excellent. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to join in with those who spoke, and I know it was limited because they had nothing but good things to say about the project, and I appreciate that. And the developer for presenting the project to us and doing the work that they did with those teams that they built in order to make this thing happen. I'm especially proud of Protem May Vang for her work in making this happen. I told her earlier today that I was really proud of her and to be sitting next to her. I won't go into much detail about that, but we had a great conversation today about the work that she's doing in the community and the difference that she's making. And I just want to speak to this community for a second. This is a significant hit for this community. One way in, one way out was the way we described it for many times, too many times. And to see this project come in brings a lot of pride to that community. And the affordable housing aspect of it, being close to transit, having the trails and the walking lanes and the bike lanes and the Class 1 bike lanes and all the parks that'll be there and connecting right next to Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. This is a big deal for that community, and it's good. I feel very good about that big deal that's happening to this community and the pride that it will bring those who have owned homes in their community for years to be a part of something like this that is life-changing. So, congratulations. Good job. I'm happy to support it. Looking forward to calling for the vote.
Yeah, real quick, I just, I got to add my congratulations to you, because this is fantastic work. It really is. This is, this in combination with 102 acres is going to help change South Sacramento. So, thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you to the city team for working so hard. Thank you to the excellent applicant team. I mean, it is rare that a project of this magnitude comes forward without controversy. A lot of people did their homework, so thank you. I just want to say personally, because we joked a little bit about the 375 thing, but I can, this is like a dream to me, because I remember being on the Senate floor debating SB 375, and I always remember it, Congressman McClintock, now Congressman McClintock, who was Senator McClintock at the time. And we had a memorable debate. You could probably catch it on YouTube if you wanted to. And he said, "This is the worst bill in history because it is going to discourage development," I think he might have referred to it as socialism, "and that this is terrible, micromanaging public policy." And of course, we got it through, and Governor Schwarzenegger, who happened to be of Senator McClintock's party, signed the bill. And now, all these years later, and all the doomsayers, and I respect Congressman McClintock, but all the doomsayers who said, "We're never going to build housing downtown. We're never going to build infill housing. We're never going to build transit-oriented development and be able to actually build infill. The market will never support it. Developers will never do it." Wrong, 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 wrong. Because people in the end vote with their feet, and people want to live where they can shop, where they can work, and where they can have easy access to transport, affordable transportation. And this is just another demonstration of what's possible when we commit to doing the right thing. Way to go, everybody.
You have homeless people serving your coffee in the morning. How do you feel about that, Mayor?
All right.
Is that justice for them?
Let us, let us call the vote.
So, Mayor, you have, you had Mayor Protem Vang.
Yes, so I'll open and close the hearing, and I'll make the motion to approve this item.
Yes.
And the second was.
Seconded by the vice mayor. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, that's unanimous. Congratulations. Okay, that concludes the formal agenda for this afternoon and this evening. Are there council ideas and comments? I know I have one. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited that our Back to the Future movie night is finally coming up this Saturday in partnership with CADA at Fremont Park. Festivities are actually going to start at noon, even though the movie won't start until dusk. We are going to have music and face painting and food trucks and even the opportunity to take the photo with an actual DeLorean. So, I hope folks will stop by. You can get more information at the website CADA has set up, which is B2TFsac.com. So, that's the B2TFsac.com. Back to the Future night. I hope you all join us. We're going to have a costume competition, so I hope you all come wearing your best Halloween gear, and that's it.
Excellent.
Did we have public comment today?
We're going to get to public comment. You shout out again, and I'm going to ask you to leave. Second straight week, do not do it. Mayor Protem Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce some quick upcoming events. This Saturday, we have Make a Difference Multicultural Unity Day celebration. That's hosted by the Hampton Station Neighborhood Association. That's happening at 7:5110 Wayne Scott Way. Just wanted to announce that event. It's from 10 o'clock in the morning until 5:00, and actually, it is a grantee of the City of Festival. So, come out. It's a free community event, really promoting diversity, health, wellness, community. There's going to be food, gardening resources, so really encourage folks to come out to that. And then another invitation, I know we were talking about Susan B. Anthony earlier with partnership with Coach Jennings, who used, he used to represent this area, but Susan B. Anthony, finally, we're getting a multi-use court. SAP has worked really hard on it, so we're having our official ribbon-cutting ceremony on Monday, October 16, from 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock, and wanted to invite the community to that. And then lastly, South SAC Festival happening on Saturday, October 21, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then I wanted to also share that District 5, Councilwoman Maple and I are putting on a joint movie night together featuring Monster House. I have not seen that movie yet, but it's going to happen this Friday, the 13th, from 6:00 o'clock until the movie ends, but it is at Mack Road Valley High Community Center in District 8 at 7833 Center Parkway. So, come out, bring your blankets, your chairs, come watch the movies. There'll be a costume contest, and that begins at 6:15, and the movie will start at sundown. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
This week is Code Enforcement Appreciation Week, so I just want to thank all our hard-working employees for being here at the City of Sacramento. I know we didn't get a chance to do a resolution today, but we will be doing a breakfast with the mayor. So, you're valued, you're appreciated, and I look forward to seeing you. On Thursday, I am hosting Natomas Street Eats at Orchard Park, so join us for food trucks, beer garden, music, and activities in the district. On Thursday, I also have open office hours at Donuts and Coffee from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And this Friday, I'm hosting Service de Londia on the North Gate Corridor next to the Big Mural with the Chamber, GNNA, Lapidad, Algo Uno, do some place-making in Natomas and in Sacramento. The mayor, you know, talked about activation of spaces throughout Sacramento at his State of the City address, and this is a mini-event that we're trying out. It's our pilot project, and if it all goes well, we're going to continue to do a lot more events in the area. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just very excited. We have a grand opening tomorrow of Green Tech, which is an electrical vehicle mobility hub, right, in District 2, actually, in Del Paso Heights, which I'm really excited and proud. It will start at 11:00 o'clock tomorrow. It's the ribbon-cutting. So, I know that I'm going to see you, Mayor, and the vice mayor there. Hopefully, some of my other colleagues can make it as well. It's going to be a great event. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody get your calendars out. I got a bunch of items if you want to volunteer or participate in Natomas. So, this Friday, come walk North Natomas Regional Park with my chief of staff and I from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. We meet at the Farmers Market entrance for our Walk to Talk. Saturday, anybody looking for volunteer hours, we are going to be cleaning up with a foundation and my Parks Commissioner, Red Bud Trail. We're meeting at Valley Oak Park at 9:00 a.m. Then this Sunday, at the North Natomas Regional Park, is Market, Sunday's Halloween edition. It's a Halloween market hosted by the Humboldt Culture Community from 11:00 to 4:00. Then next week, put it on your calendars, we're having our Natomas Westlake Food Truck Mania from 5:00 to 7:00 at Westlake Park. And then put it on the 21st, because we've got some fun things I would love to invite all my colleagues out, too. The first one is we're having the High Water Jamboree that we're partnering with the City of Sacramento. There's going to be food trucks, interactive displays such as claws, mobile command centers, flood-fighting equipment, and other. It'll be fun for all children and family members from 10:00 to 1:00 at the regional park. And then stay, go have lunch and stay. And if you'd like to participate, we're having our Floating Pumpkin Patch at the North Natomas Aquatic Center that we are partnering with the City of Sacramento from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of announcements for District 7. The Greenhaven Pocket Farmers Market, we want you to spend this Saturday and every Saturday morning with us at the Greenhaven Pocket Farmers Market, which is located at the Elks Lodge on Riverside Boulevard. This year, this time, this weekend, we're combining the very popular parking lot sale with the Farmers Market. So, if you've got money and a desire to pick up some things that you need for your home, you can absolutely come on out and get food and/or things for the home. So, for more information, visit the website, GHPF or GHPfarmersMarket.com. Once again, that's GHPfarmersMarket.com. Second announcement includes trucks and such, and this will be the last trucks and such of the year for 2023. It starts at 5:00 p.m. You can stop by with the whole family to enjoy delicious foods from the most incredible food trucks. We have all kinds of vendors, including Bad Mobile, Bussin' Burgers, Gardo Fusion, Maya's Kitchen, Rabbit Food Revolution. Who can say no to that? It's going to be a great night, and we're excited that you'll be able to join us and meet some of your neighbors in the process. And there's a lot of competition for that night on Friday, October 20, because also, at the Belle Coolidge, at Belle Coolidge, they're going to have a Boo Bash. I want you to join us for this spooktacular night of family-friendly fun at the Belle Coolidge Community Center. You dress up in your best Halloween costumes for movie screening, haunted house, pumpkin patch, seasonal crafts, fresh popcorn, and a dog costume contest. We encourage you to bring your lawn chairs and your blankets for the movie screening. Parking is limited, but the event takes place on Friday, October 20, starting at 6:30. So, my suggestion is go to trucks and such at 5:00 from 5:00 to 6:30, and then go over to the Boo Bash at 6:30 and enjoy in your favorite costume. So, you can have fun at both of them if you'd like. We'd love to have you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is the week of great partnerships between District 5 and District 8. I am honored to be doing a, we're partnering on the Union Job Fair, and this is an idea that we actually, they say flattery is the highest form of, wait, what is it? Copy imitation is the highest form of flattery. So, we copied this idea from Councilmember Valenzuela, and we'll be doing it at the Florin Road Light Rail Station. It's taking place between 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. tomorrow, so if you can, stop by. We're doing it in partnership with the Central Labor Council and many, many, many independent labor unions and state departments and many union employers. So, it's a great opportunity to get connected to a job, to get job training, learn everything you need to know. So, come by there. I will be doing the launch of my neighborhood walks on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. We're meeting at the Oak Park Community Center, so come on down. I remiss if I didn't mention, since our presentation earlier, for La Familia, they are doing their 50th anniversary celebration event that's taking place at the SAC State Alumni Center. That's this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. Please come and buy a ticket if you haven't already. And then the last thing that I would like to mention is there is the Youth Empowerment Summit. This is happening at Florin Square on Saturday, the 14th, between noon and 4:00 p.m., and it's a really great opportunity for young people to come and learn different skills. Our Shona McDaniel is going to be doing an art program there, lots of fun stuff, so come on by if you have time. Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It was mentioned earlier here by my colleague, Councilmember Laloie, but I'm excited about what's been in the works for many years, which is the Green Tech Mobility Hub in North Sacramento. You know, North Sacramento, much like the AB 617 Zone in Medoville, has some of the poorest air quality in our region, and it's in a community that's locked in between business safety, a lot of the industrial corridor, a lot of buses go through there, in an area also that needs a lot of economic development investment. And the opportunity to be able to have not only a car-share program to address an area that has also poor public transit, so being able to find transportation options is an exciting one. I know tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., Councilmember Laloie and members of the Air Quality Management District, you know, I get to be there as the past chair and also as a member of the California Resources Board, but also to show that we're going to have eight hydrogen vehicles. And a lot of folks, you know, have, you know, said that, you know, electric vehicles can't do it or whatnot, but this is an opportunity for a community to be able to see, and hopefully, not even hopefully, but I know we will spawn and move and grow the next engineers out of that community, knowing that, and by then, in the future, they're going to complain about, remember those clunky, you know, hydrogen vehicles? They're going to be producing the next best thing. So, I just wanted to really highlight that and also thank Councilmember Laloie for, you know, as soon as he came on board, we took on this effort and have that support at the Air District. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great work. I know I'll be out there tomorrow with you to congratulate you. Yep. Several things I want to announce and one proposal, and then I'm going to call it Mr. Pedro before we take. Yes, Mr. Pedro. Brian Pedro. Is it Chief Pedro? Okay. Mr. Pedro, okay. Anyways, first of all, just a little bit of a tease on behalf of Vice Mayor Geta and myself. Tomorrow afternoon, we are going to be part of a very important announcement relating to homelessness and relating to the idea of a campus, of a campus for addressing our homeless crisis. We look forward to that tomorrow. That's just a little bit of a tease, and I know there are good, interested people who were here tonight on that subject, been very passionate about tomorrow, we're going to make a big announcement. The second thing is that I, we've been working with Mr. City Manager, your Economic Development Department, just in discussion, but I'd like to kind of formalize a request tonight, if I might. There's no question that homelessness and affordable housing are identified as the city council's top priorities in the recent retreat, and there's an idea out there that I'd ask city staff to pursue in partnership with CADA regarding their middle-income housing effort. This is the idea which CADA Director Danielle Foster has put forward to use the state welfare property tax exemption to build units affordable at 80% of AMI. It's a significant incentive for the development community. CADA believes that if we're able to use this to some form of scale, even at, even in the downtown area, which CADA covers, that we could build 1,000 units of affordable housing over the next decade. The Kind Project at SN8 is an example. Now, in order to do this and do it right, what CADA would like to do is set up a revolving loan fund of about $250,000 that we can front to the developer that's willing to build a significant amount of affordable housing. It would be paid back by the welfare tax exemption. It's a cash flow issue. Anyways, more detail than probably wanted, but I just wanted to put it out there. We've been talking, Mr. Jasso, about this. I wanted to see if we could, consistent with the council's stated priorities, if we could put a little work into this and see if we might bring something back so that we might bring something back so that we could have another tool to be able to increase our affordable housing production. Okay. Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Pedro. Brian Pedro.
Mayor, returning to the City Manager's report.
This is under the, under the City Manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to make any comments?
I just want to say that this is going to be part of a weekly update that we provide related to homelessness. And Mr. Pedro is recently appointed as the Interim Director for Department of Community Response, and he's also the lead for the Incident Management Team dealing with homelessness and the response. So this will be part of a weekly update. And I think, I was looking at the report, Brian, and maybe what we could do is also provide not only the weekly update, but the cumulative, since we started doing this, just as a backstop.
Good idea. And if you have PowerPoint over time, to put it up on the screen here, too, if you want. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, City Manager, Council. So this is the weekly Incident Management Team report, and it's for the dates of October 2nd through the 6th. So what we're looking at is our 301 call activity. Rapid response calls this week, there was 193 received. We closed out 82 of them. We still have 1,100 pending. On the park-related calls, we had 68 this week. We closed 134. This has to do with Mondays, we're shifting teams to assist the Park Rangers with the parks to try and get some more calls covered in the park. Homeless encampment concerns, 399. We closed 417. And then trash, trash calls were 266, closed 245. So this week, we had a total of 962 received, and that's over a five-day period. So it was, it was up a little bit. It was about 180 calls this week, which doesn't surprise me because we've been putting the message out to call 311. And so I'll take that as a positive response to our message getting out there. We did have, with our rapid response, we had seven individuals that were placed into the Outreach Engagement Center or the Miller Park Safe Grounds. Our HMIS, we had 64 new enrollments, and then 29 that were into the Coordinated Access System. So just for, so everybody understands, this 64 is the new into the HMI system that either dropped off the system from inactivity or we have not had them made touches and put them in the system. And then the 29 are the actual referrals into the Coordinated Access. So it's that next step after making that contact of getting the referral.
Excuse me. Do not interrupt. I'm going to ask you to leave. You continue. Please leave. Please leave. I want you to leave. You're not, you are not welcome in the council chambers if you continue to interrupt. I can have Mindy Kuppi give you the admonition, and that'd be fun. I hate to do it, but you keep, you keep doing it, and so I have no other choice.
Thank you. Please do not disrupt.
Be quiet. Enough. Enough.
Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're now invited to chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you will continue, be ordered to leave the meeting. Do you understand? Thank you.
City Shelter Beds Availability. We have 21 tents and five trailers available at Miller Park. We had two spaces in the Outreach Engagement Center, and 42 was our average number of openings at city-funded shelters. That's excluding the Miller Park and the OEC. In our Coordinated Access, we have 2,200 individuals on the waitlist for shelters, 21 individual adult units available, and then 683 families are also on the waitlist for the shelters. Our PD Activity this week, 10 rapid response calls, which it's actually more than that. They're just not getting full credit yet on being on the rapid response team. So that's a data upgrade that we need to get in place. There were six coordinated responses that they assisted with, 41 sidewalk obstructions, 82 illegal storages, and 33 critical infrastructures. And Code Enforcement, we had 69 vehicles towed this week. 300 were tagged, and we still have 1,600 active vehicle cases pending. And then Park Rangers, we had three citations issued, 16 311 calls that were responded to, and 11 Park responded to. So on our encampments and coordinated this week, we did have the 28th and X Street East, we moved east towards Alhambra. So the outreach in that area, we've been doing outreach in that area since January of '23. And then we, in the last six, five to six weeks, we bumped up our outreach in that area. We did, during that coordinated, we placed three in Miller Park. And that was prior to, that was just with notification, the day of that we were out there, there was four additional that went to Miller Park. We did have two arrests that were arrests for battery and cleanup on that site. We had 25,000 pounds of trash and 932 hypodermic needles. And that brings us to today. That was what we had for the week. Questions?
Brian, thank you. We're going to have, there's a lot of numbers and stats there. We're having, we're trying to post this up, but we'll make the, the numbers that Brian was talking about public, and we'll put it up with the, with the Clerk's Office, and you can attach it to the agenda.
I think it's also important to define the term "closed," because you, you use that a couple of times, and you say case closed. What does that mean? Closed, like the problem's been resolved? Closed, the person has moved? Closed?
Yes.
Thank you.
All of them.
All right. Okay.
Thank you. So Mayor, I just got the document, and AV staff will put it up on screen as soon as we can, so we can, you can look at that during public comment. Then I'll share that with council members, and it will be uploaded to the record.
I think that's great. Yeah, even if we look at it now, it's, it's good. Okay. Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
We'll get it better for you. No, no. It's, 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 this is a good thing to do. We're going to work it. Okay. All right. We now have public testimony on items not on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have 14 speakers for matters not on the agenda. The first is Charles Fost, then John Freyas Morales, then Amy Gardner.
Good evening. I'm happy to hear about the campus model thing. Where is the announcement tomorrow?
It's, it was just a tease. It's going to come out tomorrow. I don't think I, it's with the Governor's Office.
Okay. Awesome.
It'll be out there.
My theory is always kind of the euphemistic language that's used, though. Like, it's a campus model, but that really means it's another core site.
Another what?
Another core site, like what you guys are doing on X.
Multi-use and multiplicity of approaches.
So I should pay attention to the Governor's Office tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Also, I guess I have another minute. Pay attention to what Elk Grove is doing this winter. Have your staffs pay attention to it with tapping the Gathering Inn for a location, because the Gathering Inn's a pretty good operator in the area. So this, this city should pay attention to what Elk Grove is doing this winter. It's worth looking into.
Thank you for your comments. John Freyas Morales.
Hello. I live in McKinley Village, and in my neighborhood, there have been 47 homeless package thefts and trespassing by homeless jumping the fence to steal bikes. In my neighborhood, there have been 83 calls to 311 to clear encampments. In my neighborhood, there have been 36 homeless calls for trespassing, and there have been 273 dispatches for homeless disturbing the peace. And so I support the Sacramento Police Department. I'm proud. We are protected by very brave and professional police officers. I'd like to see the 100-plus police vacancies filled immediately, and I'd like to see the police narcotics units created within the police department. The narcotics unit is needed to stop drug dealers who are poisoning the homeless with fentanyl and meth. The ESAC Police Command is very professional. They keep my neighborhood safe, and I trust Captain Stephen Moore. He has spoken several times at community gatherings advocating for Neighborhood Watch. But unfortunately, I tried to get a Neighborhood Watch, but the socialist DSA stopped them in my neighborhood. My HOA board rejected the Neighborhood Watch because they don't want a Trayvon Martin vigilante incident. There are several DSA socialists in my neighborhood. They claim to be trauma-triggered by the police. Fortunately, all of my friends support the police department and would never defund the police. Once again, I love our police department and our officers for their bravery, and I hope you find a way to fill the 100-plus vacancies established and establish the narcotics unit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Amy Gardner, then Karen Kay, then Phi Yi.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. Thank you for having me here. I'm Amy Gardner, resident of District 4, a small business owner, and a founding member of the Midtown ESAC Advocates. Our group was founded due to safety concerns and an increase in crime in our neighborhood. We include much part of Midtown and also much of East Sacramento. I want to express my support of our local law enforcement. I think everyone in SAC PD, the Sacramento Fire Department, our Park Rangers, city code enforcement, and in animal control. The people working for our health and safety deserve the utmost respect by our city officials. Every day, our law enforcement personnel don their uniforms and their badges to protect and serve the people of the city. Too often, they are disrespected by city officials and extremists. With the hostile environment in our city regarding law enforcement, we are creating a vacuum where people are leaving law enforcement, and the next generation of professionals are not encouraged to enter the field. The "defund the police" narrative and the abuse of law enforcement officials by an active and vocal group is leaving the citizens of Sacramento without the protection and safety a city our size needs. Too often, Sacramentoans are having extremely long wait times for officers to respond to a violent situation. Until you yourself experience the terror of a violent crime, you should not be limiting those who are in dangerous situations from having their safety protected. Some of us have experienced violent incidents, been the victim of a violent attack, and/or are working to rebuild the lives of those who have been brutalized. It is very hard to become whole after something like this occurs. That means, instead of working to rebuild after violence, let's work to stop it. That means, a supportive city government helps and builds the law enforcement ranks. It also means a citizenry that respects the law and knows that there are consequences when it is broken.
Thank you for your comments.
I appreciate you, and I look forward to tomorrow's meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Karen Kay, then Phi Yi, then Sharish Aswaran.
Thank you. I am here tonight to thank the Sacramento Police Department for keeping our community safe. I'm here to acknowledge the men and women in blue for putting their lives in danger to protect us. While there are certain city council members that are throwing stones about issues they know nothing about, men and women in the Sacramento Police Department are risking their lives every day. Our elected officials have turned their backs on law enforcement while simultaneously tying their hands by doing everything they can to not allow protective, proactive policing. At this point, we don't know what to expect the police to do during any call. If they show up and arrest someone, they're wrong. If they come and say they can't do anything, they are wrong. If they support programs for kids in need, it's not promoted. If they save a citizen from dangerous criminal, it's not shared enough. If they ask for non-lethal equipment, they are wrong. In fact, over the last few months, we've heard from members of the City Council fight hard to limit the equipment the police need to do their jobs effectively. They use terms like "military equipment," when in reality, the tactical equipment they use actually protect the public from threats. That equipment also saves lives, and that equipment can quickly bring situations to a safe end. The ill-informed claim the police and their equipment trigger them. But do they ever talk to the victims that have been saved by this equipment? If my job description was to protect and serve the community, and every time I'm told, I turn, yet at every turn, I'm being told to step back, I'm wrong. I'm made to listen to anti-police insults at city council meetings, I wouldn't want that job. You should be thankful for the men and women who show up every day despite the risks to serve and protect. The majority of Sacramento citizens want a strong, ready, and well-funded police department. They are reaching out and doing everything they can to engage with us. They take their free time and attend fundraisers and work hard on outreach.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Phi Yi, then Sharish Aswaran. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Phi Yi, then Sharish Aswaran.
I'm just back here to want to continue what I was trying to mention about is parking issues and safety issues. Again, in some, some of the area in my community that we lost 75% of residential parking, that, that will be a big decrease in safety as drivers are now forced to open their, the doors directly in the middle of this traffic lane. Okay? This makes it even more difficult for the disabled residents and also for elderly, obviously for elderly as well, yeah. And the other thing is that our residents are having increased a lot, a lot of increase in resident, residential parking tickets, as we see that almost every other, every other day, people are talking about getting parking tickets. So what happened was the residents are having to park over a designated line. I have pictures I can show to you. So they have to park over a designated line in order to provide themselves with additional safety from the safe traffic. If we happen, if we do not park the car on, over the line, that, which means we will be hit, the driver will be likely be hit by the running traffic. So this is the whole reason I needed to address this. Take a look at the 10th Street, re-lined, the mapping, I should say, yeah, the parking mapping. This does not make any better to the community for their safety. I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sharish, and then following Sharish is Baizy Sengway.
Thank you for your time and attention. My name is Sereshas Warren. I'm born and raised in Sacramento, attended Jesuit, and played tennis at Vanderbilt University. I'm an author, host of a podcast, art curator, and currently, I operate a systems task force with the philanthropist and the former Placer County Deputy District Attorney. I have the support and have shared time with several judges of the Sacramento Superior Court, as well as the former Chief Judges, Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of California. In light of recent attacks on Israel, along with our other geopolitical crises, the growing mental health crisis, growing homelessness, and increasing political polarization extremism we are seeing in our city and country, I'm here to offer the City of Sacramento the opportunity to officially end racism, sexism, and antisemitism by symbolically following the precedent sent by President Abraham Lincoln and officially entering slavery with the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation 160 years ago. This is an opportunity for Sacramento to become the first city to establish universal human rights. The Declaration of Time is much stronger than the UN Declaration of Human Rights, is bipartisan, rooted in physics and neuroscience, speaking across language, culture, race, sex, class, and any other way of categorizing the human being. The Declaration of Time has been signed by Dr. Zimbardo, Stanford University Professor Emeritus, and former president of the American Psychological Association. And three weeks ago, the Universal Human Rights Framework was irreversibly signed into culture and affirmed by 30 youth inside Sacramento Juvenile Hall. The Declaration of Time is constitutionally aligned in promoting individual rights and equality of all humans, is aligned with the priorities and policies stated by President Biden, and achieves the goal of this council in promoting and prioritizing racial equity language. I ask that we embrace, embrace the uncomfortability of change and actively promote peace, common agreement, and tangibly illuminate a meaningful, inclusive way forward in time. As Mayor Sacramento, I now ask Mayor Steinberg to use a symbolic cultural position and power to recognize the universal, universal human rights of these children inside Sacramento Juvenile Hall.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Baizy Sengway, then Crinksel Truthbay. I have 10 more speakers, and then Jessica Devilla.
Good afternoon. I mean, evening, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of you beautiful people here. You guys actually look more beautiful in person than on TV, by the way. So, my name is Baizy. So, my name is Bayzi Sangsay, and I'm a proud member of World Enlightenment Alliance. We are spreading awareness on the growing population of mental health and homelessness here in Sacramento, and we would like to help restore your beautiful city, right? We already have physicians on board of directors who can provide pro bono psychiatric help for the less fortunate. This will enable us to provide the treatment that will enable these people to thrive long-term. We are currently building ties with shelters. Our team is also going out into the field to provide food and services, such as haircuts and whatnot. While providing the essentials, we also want to build the confidence of these people, because we believe in a truly comprehensive approach. And would you be willing to kindly give us a courtesy sit-down so we can discuss ideas and future plans, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, I'm happy to.
Because we have, like, we, we, we need more than two minutes.
Mr. Laurel will meet with you, and that'd be happy to put you together with my team and see if we can, I can learn more, okay?
Nice, nice, nice. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Truth Bay. I don't believe I see her. Jessica Devia, then Jay, then Robert Badger.
Evening, guys, and Mr. Steinberg. I promise you, I stayed at the shelter, but the shelter had bad bugs. I'm sorry.
The mic down so we can hear you, okay, Jessica? Okay, there we go. Thank you.
I say, evening, guys, and Mr. Steinberg. I promise you, I stayed in the shelter, but the shelter had bad bugs. I had to come back out here. But I would like to say this for everybody out there in the street, we're human too, but we don't need to be treated like animals. We need a better shelter that people know how to run to stuff, not treat us like kids. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jay, then Robert Badger.
My name is Jade, and at one time, I was a part of this business community, but my re-entry rights as a homeless person were never respected from many people in the mayor's circle. Just last week, I brought another homeless woman with me. She has multiple degrees in social services. She's half Native American and black, and last week, she was denied the right to speak. She's living in her car, and she's a mother of two. Those are just one of the many stories. Like, coming here today, there was a disabled man that walked across. His encampment was broken up at the DA's office. They took his wheelchair, his tent, and his shoes. I came in, I asked if they had a wheelchair to accommodate him. There was no wheelchair. It's a disability rights issue. You guys talk about what's going on, on in Israel. What's going on across your offices at Caesar Chavez Park is a Holocaust. It's a Holocaust and a war on the poor. These people have rights. What Jessica has went through, no woman should ever have to go through. I've sat with women that are being raped, men that were just dumped from Vacaville Prison for three days that were asking me for pussy. If that were any other businesswoman out there, they wouldn't know how to interact with those people, but I do. And I'm not even given the right to give back to my community with the nonprofit that I started out of the Masonic Temple Building in two thousand and fifteen. This system is flawed. It's not reaching our most vulnerable people. There's no one doing outreach at Caesar Chavez, getting people services. It's raining. They have no tents, and they have no blankets. This is more than just a mental health issue. There's other people that have fallen through the cracks. A lot of the women went through something with a man, or they were grieving and lost a family member. But Mayor, you only favor the Stavante Clarks of our city, not women like me. Go ahead, close your eyes. That's what you did the ten years I was in downtown. I've never seen you in the park going out there, listening to people and talking to them. Do you not care that that's a humanitarian crisis on your watch? Or do you only care about the developers and the rich people that buy you out? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jay, then Robert Badger, then Mike, James Michael Fox. We have six more speakers.
Hi, there's been a huge increase of sweeps this month of homeless encampments. This woman was swept with her camp twice in the last five days.
Over eighteen years, I've been through all the programs. I'm always kicked out of everywhere because I'm not like-minded like the people that'll be there, and I didn't have to do anything wrong. They've been sweeping everywhere. Sweep is when they just come, and whether or not you're ready for them, they take all your belongings, whatever you do have, they take everything, and they just throw it away. The things that were going out are necessary. It's not like, these are things we want, these are things that we need. Clothes, hygiene, and, and the facility is Miller Park? That's not even a facility. Facility makes it sound like it's a building that's going to house you. They give the propaganda and the hype, oh, we're doing this and that. You ain't do nothing. Where's the facility? The facility is the sidewalk of Miller Park. They're just making sure stuff looks nice for certain people. They don't care how people are having to live and go without. They're very intimidating about it. It's hard enough to deal with the cold. I feel it's wrong, because we are human beings. We're not animals. And however they want to view us, that's what they are. I mean, it's nothing to do with us, but they'd rather make everybody criminalize, because they think we're such a scourge. It makes me disappointed that the ones that are supposed to know how to help us do not help us, especially the elderly, the disabled, the mentally ill, and all the young people. It's sad. It makes me so sad. It's so sad when you see your people outside, trying to survive, not knowing exactly what to do. I'm really disappointed, because I'm a true Sacramentoan. I was born and raised here, and I would have thought they would have more concern for their people. It's like in Hobson, of course. It's like, okay, we made around that. Okay, what's the next one? You know, they're trying to take us out. They're, they're taking people out all over the world the same way. I mean, we got enough slaves to the government for this war machine. I mean, it's already in full running course. It's just like, we're the loose ends, and they're not doing, have no intention to do anything right by us. City manager, step down. Step down. Somebody should pull you down. You don't deserve to be in.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Robert Badger, then James Michael Fox, then Mark Singh. It's Robert Badger here. Michael, James Michael Fox? I don't see any. And Mark Singh? Rev? And then Philip Brandt. So Rev, and then Philip Brandt are our final two speakers.
Philip Brandt, that's my big brother. Young one sitting over there. He's so deeply part of the homeless, since I got to speak about him first. That man was homeless for twenty-five years, you hear me? He used to live in a backyard, for eight of that before that. And he's clean and sober. His whole mind is good right now. He came to Sacramento from LA cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs, but he's okay. So I live amongst these streets. If y'all don't know me, you better get to know me too. You can follow me on God's Real Talk TV. I just left from ninety-seven-point-five radio to talk to Mr. J. King. Done my new remix of Lean on Him. Y'all know that song, Lean on Me? But mine is, sometime in our life, Lord, we all lose faith, Lord, and we all have this sorrow, but our Lord, he, he gave his life, so we know that there's always tomorrow. Lean on him when you're not strong. My Lord will be your friend, and he'll help you carry on. My dear Lord, it won't be long, because we're gonna need, need, need Lord Jesus to lean, lean on. Now, that's a fact of being in life. And I've learned how to do that only for twelve years now. I woke up to do prayer and God ministry, nonprofit, Homeless for Heaven, Homeless for Heaven Community Organization nonprofit, God's Children Life Matter Movement nonprofit, and Res Healing Foundation nonprofit. And I'm starting this. It's called a PIG Top Flight Security, okay? To where it's a community-based organization. I just need body cams and a bunch of T-shirts. Problem solved. Ain't nobody going to do nothing around my people, and I got homeless people that'll step up bigger than all of you guys and scare the stu-dookie out of you with a shirt on the back, saying, I'm here to protect you, lady. Don't worry about it. We got you. Really, because you can't go amongst no homeless camp and have no, you, you're not going to get robbed and stuff by them. They're going to rob each other before they really, really rob you. They might go in your backyard and get your bike, because you won't put them out front for free. I'm trying to get free bikes and RVs, because why have them in a tent out there? That's not right. That's not cool.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. And Philip Brandt is our next speaker. Thank you, Philip.
There's more God in the encampments than there is in here. Those people stick together, they take care of one another.
One more speaker.
Rev, please take your seat.
Take your seat, Rev.
Philip Brandt is our next speaker.
Okay, last speaker, last speaker.
Hello, my name's Philip Brandt, and I just came down with my little brother to see, see the city hall, and I like, like what it looked like. And I just came to visit, that's all.
I don't know. That's the first time, other than talking to my family, no, I'm part of this. That was the first time him talking outside of my family.
I love it.
In twelve years now. That was amazing to me.
I'm so glad you came.
Man, he's going to be a part of everything I'm doing.
Thank you so much.
He is my vice president of.
There's nothing, nothing else to, nothing else to come before the city council. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.